And then we'll do the pledge of allegiance. If you would, please stand pat.
Good evening, sir.
Thanks, sir. Let's pray together. Father, we thank you for this day. Your word tells us that this is the day you made and gave it to us to rejoice and be thankful for. So, Father, we do just that. We thank you, Lord, we get to express our love for you in a place like this. And we thank you that you're above all. We thank you for it, in Jesus' name. And, Father, bless the proceedings tonight. I pray, God, that you be in the thought process and the decisions and the outcomes that take place in this proceeding tonight. Father, bless our council and the citizens that they represent. And, Father, we thank you, again, that we get to serve you in this country, in this place. And we give you praise for it, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your God for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seen. Thank you. Roll call?
Mayor Allen.
Here.
Mayor President Roberts.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Stevens.
Here.
Councilmember Foster.
Present.
Councilmember Ham.
Here.
Councilmember Echol.
Here. We're all here. The approval of the Minister's Special Call Meeting on May 9th, 2019, for adoption?
Move to adopt.
Okay. Any discussion? All of everybody raise their right hand. Pose likewise. Minister approved. Presentations, we have none. We'll move right into public hearings. Item B, Z1419, Mary Sue Fallon. Jennifer?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item B is Z1419, Mary Sue Fallon. The property is located on the east side of Fallon Boulevard between North Berkeley Boulevard and Central Heights Road. The applicant's requesting a zoning change of the property from R6 Conditional District, which is residential, to General Business, which we refer to as GB. The property is zoned residential and is currently vacant and undeveloped. Here's an aerial photography of the property. On Monday, June 2nd, 2003, Goldsboro City Council approved a rezoning change for the subject property from Neighborhood Business to R6 Residential Conditional District. The subject property, along with surrounding tracts, was part of a combination rezoning for the construction of 312 apartment units. Once approved, the developer chose to build 264 apartments in lieu of 312 and forfeited his option to purchase the subject property. And again, this property is zoned residential, R6 Conditional District. And the applicant is requesting to rezone to General Business. Surrounding zoning, to the north, you have R6 Conditional District, which is residential and shopping center; to the south, Neighborhood Business; to the east, RM8, which is residential manufactured non-conforming; and to the west, General Business and Shopping Center. The city's comprehensive land use plan recommends high-density residential development for the property. City sewer is available to serve the property, and the subject area is located in a special flood hazard area known as the Hundred Year Flood Plain. The subject property has frontage along Fallon Boulevard, which will be extended from Berkeley Boulevard to Central Heights Road by the North Carolina Department of Transportation. The improvements are part of an overall project to realign Central Heights Road and Royal Avenue at Berkeley Boulevard. The improvements are scheduled to begin construction in July 2020 with a construction duration of 24 months. Currently, there are no plans for the development of the property, and the applicant believes the marketability of the property would be enhanced if rezoned to General Business. At this time, there is no action necessary, and the Planning Commission will have a recommendation for council meeting on August 5th. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Jennifer. This is a public hearing where the applicant requests its only change from property from RG CD to residential to GB, R6, I'm sorry. Would anybody like to speak? Would anybody like to speak? CNN will close this public hearing and move to the next, which is Item C, Z1519, Mary Sue Fallon.
Item C is Z1519, Mary Sue Fallon. This property is the east side of Fallon Boulevard between North Berkeley and Central Heights Road. The applicant's requesting a zoning change of the property from Neighborhood Business to General Business. This property is located directly adjacent to the previous property we just discussed. Currently, the property is vacant and undeveloped, and on Monday, October 24th, 1994, Goldsboro City Council approved a rezoning change for the subject property from R16 to Neighborhood Business. Surrounding zoning to the north, you have R6 Conditional District for residential; to the south, RM8 Residential Manufactured I2 CD, which is general industry; R16, RMNC Residential Manufactured Non-Conforming Lots; and then to the east, RM8, RM16; and to the west, General Business. There's an aerial photography of the tract in question. The city's comprehensive land use plan recommends commercial development for the property. City water and sewer are available to serve the property, and the subject area is located in a special flood hazard area known as the Hundred Year Flood Plain. As stated previously, the subject property has frontage along Fallon Boulevard and is also part or fronts along the area, which will be extended from Berkeley Boulevard to Central Heights Road by the North Carolina Department of Transportation. These improvements are part of the overall project to realign Central Heights Road and Royal Avenue at Berkeley Boulevard. Currently, there are no plans for the development of the property, and the applicant believes the marketability of the property would be enhanced if rezoned to Central, or General Business. At this time, there is no action necessary, and the Planning Commission will have a recommendation for council at your August 5th meeting.
Any questions, Jennifer? All right, thank you, Jennifer. This is a public hearing requesting its only change from property from Neighborhood Business to General Business. Would anybody like to speak? Would anybody like to speak? CNN will close this public hearing, and that ends our public hearing, and our Planning Commission is excused. Thank y'all for coming, and I appreciate what y'all do for us. And you're welcome to stay. All right, with the Planning Commission being excused, we're going to move to our public comment period time. This is a time from the, in our meeting, where anybody from the public can talk for up to three minutes. I do want to say before you start, this is about city business. We're going to talk about matters relevant to the city and things that we have authority over. We're not going to campaign. We're not going to talk ugly about other people. We're not going to talk about elections. So, if you start doing that, I'm going to cut you off. So, I want you to know that before you come. First speaker like to speak? Yes, sir, Mr. Wright. Never mind, I'm sorry. You can go next, Mr. Wright. Yes, ma'am.
I've been coming to these meetings for quite a while now.
Okay.
And every one of them, without a doubt, has been you people ragging on Mr. Williams, Councilmember Williams. This morning was the most disgusting mess I had ever seen in my life.
Okay.
And I wonder, how many of you sitting up there behind that have land that you set up beer halls on that have been, come through here? How many of you? Mr. Ham, I understand you do.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question, ma'am.
You got land that you're allowing a beer parlor to be on?
Am I, do I have land that I'm allowing a beer parlor to build on?
Yes.
No, I do not.
To be on, is what she said?
What?
That you have one to this, to be on?
Yes, ma'am. You got any other comments?
Yeah.
Okay, what's that?
I'll be so damn glad to see you go.
Okay, that's fine, ma'am. You got any other relevant comments? If not, you may sit down, and we'll call the next speaker.
I'm already sitting, I have to understand.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Would somebody else like to speak? Anybody else like to speak? Mr. Wright, I think you were next.
Mayor, City Council, City Manager, my name is Charles Wright. I've just come before you to share with you the public comment form for the 2019-2020 Annual Action Plan, and it reads as such, and you have a copy. I wholeheartedly support the recommended expenditures for the City of Goldsboro 2019-2020 Community Development Block Grant slash Home Investment Partnership. And it goes on to say it was submitted by, in part, John Barnes, the CEO of Rebuilding Broken Places, and Charles Wright, Sr., myself. It's my belief that these grant expenditures, as outlined below, would greatly enhance Goldsboro availability of new affordable housing, neighborhood rehabilitation and revitalization efforts, wholesome family activities, and the uplifting of community pride and morale. These supported recommendations include $150,000 for home fund CHO activity submitted by Mr. Barnes; $100,000 for housing rehabilitation from the Community Development Block Grant for rehab and repair of homes, which was proposed by myself; $100,000, $75,000 for public service and improvement for splash pad at either North End Park or H. V. Brown Park, proposed by myself, Charles Wright; and $10,000 for public service for rebuilding Broken Places CDC, proposed also by Charles Wright. And I just want to give you councilmen and the city manager the opportunity to know that this proposal was utilized on the public comment sheet that's issued by the Community Relations Department. The only thing I did was insert a text and ask people if they agree with that. They did. I'd like to give the mayor and the council the opportunity to sign and agree with this grant proposal I put forth and join the approximately 500 others that I'm submitting to this city clerk to present to the Community Relations Department. And I thank you, as always. If you have any particular questions or comments, I'd be glad to try to answer them respectfully while I'm standing before you.
I'd like to be the first one to sign, though, because I see some.
Well, there's one right there. Just turn it in. And any other councilmen, you can be 502, and any other councilman, or you, the mayor. And this was initiative that was done in the low to middle income zones. It was done primarily at some churches, and the projects that's outlined will be done in the low to middle income neighborhood tracts as specified by the grant. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Wright.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Alicia Pierce.
Good evening.
Mr. Broadway, I just wanted to mention, you said that you felt like it keeps going around about the disclosure statements. But as a citizen, I just wanted to make sure that you guys are aware that the reason that we keep pressing that the disclosure statements be completed, as well as if we come as a citizen and ask for an investigation to be done, is we just want to seek clarity on how much property and ownership some of you sitting in those particular seats are gaining off of the taxpayers' dollars and utilizing your, having a role that you play, getting information that may come to you that, before it gets out to the public. So, that's why we're asking. We want to know if you have ownership in companies that potentially, when the bids go in, are you maybe a part of the ownership of that company? When the bid go in to build some of the things that we see you vote on, those are the reasons that we're asking for those disclosure statements. And those are the reasons that we're asking also for there to be, once we get the disclosure statements, give us as citizens an opportunity to look at it, give us an opportunity to ask the city council to do a thorough investigation, and then actually complete a report in writing that we can see from the investigation if that is, is the part that, because I couldn't understand what part. I figured you guys really know this, but maybe there was some clarity that needed to be sought, I don't know.
I would assure you, it's standard procedure with most boards. It was just a mistake made with this board, and there was absolutely no reason to hide anything.
Well, are we, okay, did you guys ever get them completed?
Yes.
Are they available to the public?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, and they're free to the public.
Oh, thank you.
Have a good night. Thank you. Who else would like to speak? Anybody else? Mr. Martin?
Good evening, sir. At the work session on April the 1st, I did hear the city attorney's report on the investigation that was conducted on the complaint that I filed. And I do recall him saying that while some of the allegations that were made in the complaint were without merit, some did have merit, specifically those involving the lack of disclosure statements from 2015 to 2018. However, he indicated that since one was filed in 2019, that should suffice for not having filed them for the prior years. I asked for a copy of that investigation that evening to confirm what I thought I heard him say, and I never got a response from it. So, I followed up again and came back to the city council and asked for a copy of that report during the public comment session. And I got no response from the city council to my second request. I asked the editor of the News August for some help on trying to get a copy of that report. He said he also had requested one and hadn't gotten a copy of the report either. So, tonight I learned that there was no written report done of that investigation. And I'm very disappointed with city council that I had to hear that this evening, and city council never responded to those requests that I made for that report. I hope that the person who filed the latest report, which I had thought about myself, will at least get the common decency of a response to that complaint which you filed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would anybody else like to speak? Anybody else? CNN, one, we're going to close the public hearing, and we're going to move to, I mean, I'm sorry, the public comment period. We're going to move to our agenda. We had gone in the work session through Item J, so we're going to start with Item K, which is a street closing for Titleless Drive. Jennifer?
Item K is street closing Titleless Drive. On April 11th, 2019, Lane Farms LLC requested staff to close a portion of Titleless Drive based on NCDOT realignment of Salem Church Road and US 70 bypass that is located within the city limits. The petition's street closing has been forwarded to the Fire Police, Engineering, and Public Works Departments for their reviews. No objections were found to the closing. The Engineering Department has indicated that a utility easement should be retained over this section of Titleless Drive for an existing six-inch water line if the right-of-way is closed. If the street section is closed, ownership of the right-of-way would return to the property owner. The council on May 6th, 2019, adopted a resolution of intent setting the public hearing, and that resolution was advertised for four weeks in the newspaper. Adjacent property owners were notified of the public hearing, a certified mail, and the street section was posted with the notice of public hearing. At the public hearing held on June 17th, no one spoke either for or against the closing of Titleless Drive. The Planning Commission, at their meeting held on June 24th, recommended closing a portion of Titleless Drive with maintaining a utility easement over this section of Titleless Drive for an existing six-inch water line. It is recommended by motion except the recommendation of the Planning Commission. Any questions?
All right, Item L?
Item L is a contract award for Goldsboro Wayne Transportation Authority, known as GWTA, for marketing and public relation services. GWTA requested qualifications from qualified marketing and public relation firms to manage and expand the public outreach and marketing strategy for the GWTA public transportation system. The scope of services includes development, maintenance, and/or creation of several items related to public outreach and marketing strategies. They would include maintenance of the GWTA website, ridership counts, customer satisfaction surveys, public outreach materials and promotional items, media kits, corporate information packets, advertising media, and other associated items. Three consultants submitted qualifications, and myself, Community Relations Director, as well as Wayne County Opera, Director of Wayne County, or Wayne Opportunity Center, and Don Willis, who is also the Director of the GWTA, reviewed each consultant's submittal. Upon completion of the review, staff recommended Quest Corporation of America, known as QCA, to the Goldsboro Wayne Transportation Authority Board of Directors at their June 27th meeting. The recommendation was based on QCA's qualifications, past experience, and project approach. The board of directors recommended and approved the selection of QCA for this task. Staff has worked with the consultant and NCDOT to negotiate a fee for the defined scope. The final proposed cost is $36,810 with an option to extend for up to two one-year periods depending on the available NCDOT Section 5303 funding. Section 5303 funds are available for the Goldsboro MPO and transit planning only for FY20 in the amount of $39,000. The fee proposal for this project has been reviewed by the city staff and NCDOT Public Transportation. Eighty percent of the project will be paid with the use of NCDOT Section 5303 funds in the amount of $29,448, and twenty percent of the cost, which is $7,362, will be paid for by the City of Goldsboro as part of their match for the use of Section 5303 funds. These funds are currently budgeted in the city's FY 2020 budget. This contract shall begin July 1 and end June 30, 2022, and, as previously stated, contains an option to extend for up to two one-year periods. It is recommended by motion except the staff and GWTA Authority Board of Directors' recommendation and adopt the attached resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a contract in the amount of $36,810 with QCA for marketing and public relation services.
Any questions from council?
Is that the same company that did the study five years ago?
Yes, sir.
They did a great job.
Yes, sir.
Is there a reason why Wayne County isn't paying a percentage of this fee?
These funds are directly given to the Goldsboro MPO, and the City of Goldsboro is a lead planning agency for the Goldsboro MPO, so we are the bank account, basically, and oversee those funds, 5303 section, or Section 5303 funds. As lead planning agency, we accept the responsibility of those funds.
Wayne County is going to be getting benefits as well, though.
I understand, but there, there has been no, no conversations with them to pay any portion of the project.
Well, they should be. Thank you.
Item M?
Item N is informal bid request for maintenance of enhancement areas in Welcome to Goldsboro Signs service contract. The City of Goldsboro has maintenance agreements with the North Carolina Department of Transportation to maintain three areas along landscape state right-of-ways. These locations are known as enhancement areas in our Royal Avenue between Center Street and Berkeley Boulevard, and an area extending along the east side of Spence Avenue, running from Royal Avenue, a distance of approximately 600 feet; US 70 East bypass and Spence Avenue interchange, which also includes a service road quadrant and area adjacent to Bojangles' Restaurant; and US 70 West and US 117 I 795 bypass interchange. The bid request also includes the maintenance of three Welcome to Goldsboro Signs, and those locations are south side of US 70 West, which is adjacent to the radio station at 2581 US 70 West; the north side of US 70 East, which is on property by New Hope France Church at 4451 US 70 East; and then the east side of NC 111 South, which is known as 963 South NC 111 Highway. The city advertised and placed out for bid detailed specifications for maintaining the above enhancement areas and Welcome to Sign, Goldsboro Sign locations. On Friday, July 5th, bids were opened in the Planning Department. One bid was received, and it was received by Precision Lawn Care and Landscaping, in the amount of $60,000 for the enhancement areas and $19,200 for the Welcome Sign areas. Adequate funds are available within the fiscal year 2020 budget in order to perform the maintenance of the enhancement areas only. Bid amount for Welcome to Goldsboro Sign maintenance came in over budget, and staff is requesting the Welcome to Goldsboro Sign maintenance be rejected. Staff intends to revise the scope of work for the Welcome to Sign, Goldsboro Sign maintenance and rebid for services. Contract for enhancement area maintenance is for a 12-month period, beginning July 1 and extending to June 30 of 2020. It is recommended by motion except the low bid submitted by Precision Lawn Care and Landscaping in the amount of $60,000 for the maintenance of the enhancement areas; to reject the contractor's bid for Welcome to Goldsboro Sign maintenance in the amount of $19,200; and three, authorize the planning director and finance director to sign a service contract with Precision Lawn Care and Landscaping for provisions of the maintenance of enhancement areas.
Any questions?
Any questions?
All right, item M. I'm sorry, item N. Excuse me, Catherine. I need to put the glasses on.
Mayor, council, tonight we are asking you to look at accepting a resolution for the State Reserve Loan Program and to also create a capital project for sewer rehabilitation. The City of Goldsboro is in need of rehabilitating some sewer. The areas would be the Big Ditch Outfall, Carolina Street, and the Cherry Hospital area. The project will encompass approximately 3,370 linear feet of eight-inch, 12-inch, and 36-inch gravity sewer, and also includes the rehabilitation of 15 manholes and approximately 25 services. The city has received a letter of intent back in March of 2018, and we have now been through the process with the local government commission. They have approved the loan. So, at this point in time, we are in need of accepting the loan from the State Reserve Program. It's an amount of $1,235,100 at an interest rate of 1.82% over 20 years. So, tonight we are asking you to accept the State Reserve Loan Program Resolution in the amount of $1,235,100, and also to adopt the attached ordinance to create the capital project fund in the amount of $1,259,802, which includes loan closing cost of $24,702, representing 2% of the loan.
Any questions? All right. Item M, Catherine.
The next item is from the state revolving fund loan for water line replacement. This will replace existing water lines, and it will also install a new booster pump station in the New Hope area. It's including areas such as the Lane Tree subdivision, areas on Ash Street, from Herman Street to William Street, Berkeley to Meadow Lane on Ash Street, and Elm Street from Madison Avenue to Lee Drive, as well as Slocum Street from Westbrook Road to Seymour Johnson Air Force Base. Again, this project has been going on since about 2017, and we have just received the notification from the Department of Environmental Quality that LGC has approved the loan in the amount of $3,610,000 at an interest rate of 1.82% over 20 years. The loan closing cost, which is 2% of the loan, $72,200, which will come from the city. And tonight, what I'm asking you is to adopt the attached resolution, which will accept the state revolving loan in the amount of $3,610,000, and to adopt the attached ordinance to create the capital project fund in the amount of $3,682,200.
Wait, let me ask, Marty, the, one question for you. I see there's 3,100 feet on Ash Street from Herman Street to William Street. Are you telling me they're going through the paving they just put down?
It'll probably be a year and a half to two years before they get to it, but still, yeah.
I do want to clarify the state put the paving down, but we still don't want to tear up new paving on anybody's part, so, okay. All right. Any questions? All right, item P?
And then my last item is to accept a state revolving fund loan and creation of a capital project for the Plate Settlers Project. This project is intended to increase the capacity at the water treatment plant through the installation of a sedimentation basin inclined plate settlers to improve the turbidity removal under flow conditions and increase sedimentation basin and filter capacity from 12 to 14 million gallons a day. Again, Department of Environmental Quality has informed us the LGC has approved our loan request, and we have been approved for $1,797,360 at an interest rate of 1.82% over 20 years. And the closing cost, 2%, will be $35,947. So, tonight we're asking you to adopt the attached resolution to accept the state revolving loan fund in the amount of $1,797,360, and to adopt the attached ordinance to create the capital project fund in the amount of $2,114,307.
Any questions? All right, thank you, Catherine. Next, we'll move to item Q, the 1920 Annual Action Plan. Any listeners?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council.
Good evening.
Item Q is your FY 1920 Annual Action Plan recommended budget. City council action is needed for you all to accept FY 1920 allocation funds from HUD for your Community Development Block Grant funds, as well as your home funds. In addition, you must approve the FY 1920 Annual Action Plan and Budget Recommendation in preparation for submission to HUD. As I stated to you all during your June 17th public hearing, the city was notified of its allocation amount, and the amount for CDPG was a little over $328,000 in CDPG funds. When it retains the home funds, the City of Goldsboro received a little over $214,000. You also have prior year money in CDPG of a little over $34,000. And your home funds, as you all remember, was a little over $324,000. And as we explained during your public hearing, that large amount is due to the restrictive nature of home funds, and if you're not going to do a lot of development and assess the amount of home buyer assistance at large amounts, you accumulate those funds, as well as the allowance of a commitment and allocation of funds. The city has completed its 30-day public comment period, which was held May 17th, 2019, to June 17th, 2019, as well as your required. to June 17, 2019, as well as your requirement by HUD to hold a public hearing, which was held, and a public comment period. The public comment period was held June 14, 2019, and your, as I stated prior, you had a public hearing June 17 of 2019. At that public hearing, there was four citizens that provided their input regarding the restructuring of CDVG and home funds within the recommended budget as it related to transitional housing, rehabilitation, and public services. These comments are similar in nature to the comments received during the June 14, 2019 public comment period, except for there was a comment that was received that was structured around utilizing CDVG funds to do more revitalization in conjunction with Union Station. So that was a public comment that we did receive. We also have, as I told you in your meeting, public hearing meeting, we had not finished the consolation process with nonprofits. And so we have done that. We've received two comments, and they were all in related to community development, excuse me, yes, Community Development Housing Organization, your Chodo funds. One was pertaining to more homeownership, another was in favor of allocation of increased affordable housing through multifamily. As you all are familiar with this process, comments will be incorporated into the final submission of your FY 1920 Annual Action Plan. During the Commission on Community Relations and Development meeting on June 19, 2019, staff provided a preliminary presentation on the draft of the FY 1920 Annual Action Plan Budget Recommendation, the same one that went before council. As you all are aware, this is your last year, your five-year cycle, and therefore, these activities will be reported in your paper. It is the recommendation of staff by motion to accept FY 1920 allocation of funds by HUD from the CDVG and home program, and to, one, approve the FY 1920 Annual Action Plan and Budget Recommendation presented during the City Council's regular meeting of June 17, 2019, in preparation for HUD's submission. Also authorize the mayor and staff to execute, execute and file the annual action plan along with the required certificates and SF 424 and grant agreements that are required to receive CDVG home funds for and on behalf of the City of Goldsboro, and to make necessary changes to those documents when required by HUD. Any questions?
Any questions?
You all did receive those, you were present for those comments, but what I've done is, I've already scanned those comments and have provided them to HUD. They will still go into the action plan, but I wanted them to have those in advance.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Item R. Marty, before you represent, let me throw a wrench in you. I'd like to ask the council to remove this slide, but my reasoning is, is you've got the research on this, and I want to see where that money is, let the council look at that coherently with this project, so that we're looking at, you know, all, since we don't really know exactly how many dollars. So if the council is okay with it.
We do have two million dollars. Catherine corrected, she thought I was, she thought I had subtracted out the six hundred thousand for this project, so we do have two million. I just want to clarify that.
Okay, so let's just, let's do them both at the same time, if the council's okay with that, and then we can, that'll give everybody time to see what's in their district, what's important, and what list, and maybe you can go over the recircumlist a little closer and see what project you think in each district's the most important. So, because we're, either way, we're not going to have enough money, as I think, to what we've got on the, on the list. So is there any reason we can't wait two more weeks on that?
We've got a sixty-day window as far as holding bids. I don't know if I'd have to bid this out again.
Well, you've been sitting on it sixty days.
Well, it was supposed to go last month, and we had to get a, a figure on how much money we had left in street bonds and.
Can you find that out tomorrow? Just find out what, what it is, what the extension, if we need to do something, we'll figure something out. Is there, can I, well, I'd like to make a motion, do we move item R off the consent agenda until next meeting? Is there a second? Any discussion? All favorites right hand, opposed likewise? Okay, so that motion carries. So we'll remove item R, and we'll just put it back on the agenda next time in conjunction with your recircum.
And I also want to clarify, on the Ash Street water line, they're going to pipe burst that, so they'll dig, they'll dig two tins, so it'll be men on the lead.
That's good. All right, that'll help everything. Next, on the consent agendas, we have the departmental monthly reports. Anybody have any questions or comments on those?
I do.
Okay.
Not a report, but I guess I'm just making a statement.
Well, wait, wait till we get the councilroom comments.
We agree.
Okay?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
All right, so that's the end of our consent agendas, so I'll offer that for adoption? Or is there a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item R?
Mayor, you got items D through S presented for council approval, with the exception of item E, which was denied in the recommendation, and then item R would be accepted.
Yeah, so we got the, we got the entire consent agenda minus item R. Now, E's on the consent agenda, we just spread it out.
Yeah, but is it not?
Okay, is there a motion?
I move that we accept the consent agenda, D through S, or R, with the exception of, of, let's see where.
D through S, with the exception of R.
With the exception of R, yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mayor Allen.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Clotman-Broadway.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Williams.
No.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Councilmember Foster.
No.
Councilmember Ham.
Yes.
Councilmember Ray.
Yes. All right, consent agenda's approved. Next, we've got items requiring any of those action. We have none. City manager's report.
Yes, sir. Request council approve to sponsor the Wayne County Veterans and Patriots Coalition Purple Heart banquet. They asked for twelve hundred and fifty-dollar sponsorship. You have funded that since 2012. They're expecting over five hundred people to attend and sixty-five Purple Heart recipients. That funding would come from the mayor's budget line.
Any problems? All right.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else, Michelle?
No, sir.
All right. All right, we got two, we got one proclamation and one resolution, so I'll read those real quick. Purple Heart Proclamation Day. Whereas the original Purple Heart, known as Badge of Military Merit, is the oldest military decoration in the world in present use. The Purple Heart was established by General George Washington on August 7, 1782, during the Revolutionary War, and is the first award made available to the common soldier to recognize outstanding valor and merit. On February 22, 1932, the Purple Heart was revived on the 200th anniversary of George Washington's birth out of respect of his memory and military achievements. Per the United States Army Regulation, the Purple Heart is awarded in the name of the President of the United States, so any member of the Armed Forces of the United States who is wounded or killed in action against any enemy of the United States or as a result of an act of any such enemy or opposing armed forces. Throughout our nation's history, the men and women of the United States Armed Forces have answered the call to duty with honor, decency, selflessness, demonstrating bravery and courage in the face of danger. In the defense of freedom, many loyal and brave Americans have been killed or injured in the performance of their duties. It is especially fitting that we set aside a date to recognize the service and sacrifice of all our citizens who have been decorated with the Purple Heart. Therefore, I check out, may the City of Goldsboro, North Carolina, to hear our claim August 7, 2019, as Purple Heart Day, and the City of Goldsboro, in honor of those who have received the Purple Heart and encourage citizens to support the Purple Heart Banquet on August 3, 2019, where a special tribute will be made to our local Purple Heart recipients. I just want to say, this is a really good event in our community, a lot of, it's just a really touching and moving event, and that's several of our councilmembers are going to it, and certainly anything our community can do to support it, since we're a military community, would be, would be great. They do a great, great job, and it's really great to see all those Purple Heart folks in there. Next, I have the Resolution 2019, expressing appreciation for service rendered by Anton Coley as an employee of the City of Goldsboro for more than twenty-four years. Anton, Anton Coley retired on July 1, 2019, as a solid waste technician with the Public Works Department of the City of Goldsboro, with more than twenty-four years of service. Anton began his career on July 5, 1995, as a laborer too with the Public Works Department. On July 1, 2016, Anton's position was reclassified as a solid waste technician with the Public Works Department, where he has served until his retirement. Anton has proven himself to be a dedicated, efficient public servant, who has gained the admiration and respect of his fellow workers and the citizens of the City of Goldsboro. Whereas the mayor and the city council of the City of Goldsboro desire, on behalf of themselves, city employees, and the citizens of the City of Goldsboro, are expressing to Anton Coley their deep appreciation and gratitude for the service rendered by him to the city over these years. Therefore, now therefore be it resolved by the mayor of the city council of the City of Goldsboro, North Carolina, that number one, we express our deep appreciation and gratitude for the dedicated service rendered during Anton's tenure with the City of Goldsboro, and we offer him our very best wishes for success, happiness, prosperity, and good health in his future endeavors. This resolution should be incorporated into the officials of the City of Goldsboro, and shall be in full force and effect from this, the 15th day of July, 2019. Offer this for adoption.
Second.
Any discussion? All favorites right hand, opposed likewise? Resolution passes. All right, so that leaves us to councilmember comments. We'll start with Councilmember Aco.
No comment.
Councilmember Ham?
No comment.
Councilmember Foster?
No comment.
Councilmember Broadway?
I just want to give a real shout-out to the Goldsboro Police Department. They, on Sunday, they did a wonderful function in the old Sears parking lot, what's called Cars and Cops, and I couldn't believe how hot it was out there. We must have had two or three hundred people and a lot of funny-looking cars, but they, they did a good job, and it's all part of their community policing, and that's important, and the results are starting to show. That's all I have, sir.
All right. Councilmember Stevens?
I wanted to make a motion, if you guys would accept it, that you accept my resignation and stepping down from the seat of District 3 on August 2nd, and if I would, would be allowed, as a vote, to pay me out for the last, the remainder of my stipend as to be removed and, and go from there with my life, because I have other opportunities to go back into the film and animation industry, and that's why I'm stepping down. That was the motion I'd like to make, and then I'll finish on.
Well, I don't think you need to make a motion. If you want to resign, you can.
I was always told by Mr. Lawrence, I had, it had to be approved by the council, and I had to ask you guys and then have it put in writing and go from there. The last date I would be serving is August 2nd.
But I think there's two parts to this. One, you want to make it, you wanted to resign.
Right.
August, like you said, in the city council. What was the part about your stipend?
Uh, be paid out, the, the stipend.
You mean paid out for your complete term?
However, whatever, I mean, I don't know, I don't know if the law let me do that, but however, whatever's left, whatever is owed, is what it, is what I'm saying, on that date.
Let us, why don't you let us research it?
Yeah, the date, what is left after the date of, what's left of the date of 2nd, of the August 2nd, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Okay. And then, this comment, I, you know, in regards to everything, has been fun, whatever. There are some things that I spoke about, I don't know, almost a year ago. I think, Mr. Councilmember Williams, you, now you've been vindicated, you've gotten truth come out about you. However, Councilmember Aco, you know, please continue, you know, fighting for your vision. Councilmember Ham, I know, I spoke once a time, and, you know, just continue to lead and do the things that I know that you do and what you believe in is right. That's what I kind of spoke to you on at that time. Councilmember Foster, I was talking to you about the truth. Well, truth is out there. You now know what's going on, and you also know about DGDC. Like you said, you have no ill will towards them. I have no real ill will towards them, but I still have questions that still need to be, are still remaining to be answered. How is it that a nonprofit can have city employees working for it? That is still a gray area, and I definitely still don't understand how that can be, but I pray that you guys will all come to some conclusion and figure out how that is. Mr. Mayor, you keep doing you, man. I never had any ill will towards you, ever. I always considered you a decent person and a friend, and I, I hope that you will continue being a genuine person. Mr. Broadway, it's been a pleasure serving with you, and not always, we always see eye to eye, but we always agreed on things, and we never butt heads about things, but we, we did always see things in the manner that we were supposed to be in as gentlemen. So, it was always a pleasure serving with you. And that's just it. I, I look at it as a learning experience. I came into this position trying to not run or try to change the city. I came into this position wanting to change the arts and save the arts for the City of Goldsboro. Hope I've done that. I still have not been able to solidify and get the Art Council of Goldsboro a building of their own, but in the position that, and the opportunities that I have, that wherever it takes me, and I will come back, and I will buy them their own building, because the opportunity that I have is very unique. And that is just that. I, I pray for the City of Goldsboro and the citizens, and hopefully you wish you well.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Williams?
Well, I would have liked to see you finish your term, but you know what's best for you, sir. Someone probably won't believe it, but I'll, it seemed kind of strange looking over there and I seen, despite our ups and downs, you know? So I wish you luck with what you're going to do, and that's the truth for the matter. I want to thank all the people that stood by me and supported me throughout the censoring process. It's been long, drawn out. It hasn't been easy. It hasn't been easy on the city. It hasn't been easy on my family. It hasn't been easy on my business, so I wouldn't put, I wouldn't want anyone to walk in my moccasins, to be honest. But I thank, from the bottom of my heart, everybody who, who supported and stood by me. I hope this doesn't happen to anyone in Goldsboro, what has happened to me. It's not easy. It's not fair. Only one man on this council, after the censor hearing, came and shook my hand. Why is that? We have to do better, and I can't always be the one to extend a hand. I can't. I didn't deserve this. The city didn't deserve this. My family didn't deserve this. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We stay in adjournance. Thank you everybody for coming.